Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 19, 2020 Board of Selectmen meeting for the Town of Hingham. I'd like to call us to order, and I'd like to read the following. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting are being recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me now at the start of the meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Lodge Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform all other participants of said recording. Does anybody wish to record tonight's meeting? Seeing none, I'd like to move to the approval of the minutes. We have a couple of sets tonight, and I don't know if my colleagues are ready to vote. There have been a few changes here and there in a certain of the minutes, but we have May 7, May 11, and May 12. Are we ready to vote on all of those minutes?
This is Joe. I reviewed Mary's comments on May 12, and I'm comfortable with those minutes. I have not seen changes to the May 7 or May 11 minutes.
I guess May 12 was what I was referring to in terms of changes.
Yep.
I'm ready to vote all of them, but I'm also happy to wait if there are any sets that either you or Joe have not had a chance to review.
Okay, so why don't we do this? I would accept a motion to approve the minutes dated May 7, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
I would accept a motion to approve the minutes dated May 11, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
And last but not least, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes dated May 12, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
All right. The next item of business, so I know that we've got a few people on the line tonight. Let me just take you through what we've talked about in past meetings. We run the remote meetings just like we run the meetings at Town Hall, if you can recall that far back. We will consider an item on the agenda. Joe, Mary, and I will chat about it, ask questions about it, and then I will open the floor to the public for questions. And there's a public comment section at the end of the meeting for items not on the agenda. The topics tonight include a COVID-19 update, a public hearing on the transfer of a common vitular license, town warrant, planning articles, and the Hingham Harbor Walk. So I'd like to begin with the hearing on the transfer of the restaurant Common Vitular All Alcoholic Beverages License and Pledge of License from Cogshell Group LLC DBA Crow's Landing to Locals Tacos LLC DBA Locals Tacos E Tequila. Is there somebody here from the group to present on that?
Yes, hello. This is Madam Chairman Jeff Tocchio. How are you?
I'm well, Jeff, and yourself?
Excellent. Thank you very much to you and to the board. I represent the group that's getting the transfer, which is the Locals Tacos LLC, and that's going to operate as Locals Tacos E Tequila over at 6 Crow Point Place next to where Crow Point Pizzeria is, and then also the Excellence Station. So it's currently the Crow's Nest, which is something that was put together by us several years ago, and that's the Cogshell Group. And we're looking at both the transfer of the Section 12 license as well as the restaurant Common Vitular All Alcoholic Beverage License with a pledge to the underlying property owner, which is basically the Colly family here in Hingham. What we're looking at is basically the same exact building that's there. It's got 54 seats. There's already the license that's in place for the property, and they intend to maintain that 54-seat number. They're looking at maintaining, you know, basically everything that's there, and it's going to be an upgrade cosmetically. Brian McLaughlin is proposed to be the manager of the license, and some people know Brian because he's the owner and operator of the Seabird Coffee Company over in downtown Cohasset. And prior to that, he's got experience basically with Tortilla Heights, also Esq. Restaurant Group, and then also a wine warehouse retailer. And all of his experience in the hospitality group has been around the San Francisco area and then throughout California, where he's operated several restaurants, similar concept, which is basically a casual, family-type restaurant. This in particular is going to be more of, you know, tacos, Mexican theme. We've given to you folks some of the menus that are proposed as part of the, you know, what they're looking at to give you an idea of what the fair will include. You'll see that it's a lot of moderate-priced Mexican food using local ingredients. It also has a children's section, and that's something that they're really looking to do is continue what the use has been there, you know, for families, more of a family-oriented dining place. They're looking at the same hours of operations that are there now. They're basically looking at 11:00 a.m. to, excuse me, 10:00 a.m. to midnight, and that would be on, just give me one second, I just lost my place, that would be on the weekends, so basically the Friday and Saturdays. And then they're also looking at a lunch turn, which basically would be 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday. The other partner is Douglas McGregor, and he's one of the folks who is behind the Stoked Pizza Restaurant, which is in Brookline and currently about to open over in Cambridge. What they're looking to do at the position or the site is to go in, and it was recently upgraded, so they're looking at cosmetic upgrades. They're looking at putting in a new bathroom, actually investing quite a bit in the kitchen, and they've got a total build-out coming just a little under $130,000. That's detailed in the applications. Beyond that, they've also got an area which is on the second floor, which is where the office is, which has a lockable cabinet for all of the liquor, you know, off-hours, that's not accessed by anyone from the public. It's all basically only employees. And then also, Brian is tips-trained. He's got safe serve and allergy training certifications that are already in place that he got as part of the Seabird concept, and that's all basically going well. Their intent, their attraction to this property in Hingham stems from what they've been very successful at doing over in Cohasset. Brian was able to open up a window which allows for some takeout, which during this COVID period has been really good for him, really good for his people, but also a real solidifying force over in Cohasset. It brings a lot of people down to the downtown area every day to visit, and he's been real proud, proud of that contribution. They're looking to make a similar contribution in Hingham, and they're reaching out through a lot of their customers from the Hingham area and getting excited about this concept. The one piece that came up, that was a question that I supplemented that Sharon had asked with a letter, is that there is currently, from 1999, a restriction that applies to the use of this property for lunchtime use on weekdays that are not holidays. And what we're asking for is that that restriction not appear in the license, and that has to do with the fact that we're going to be going in for a special permit A3. With the planning board, there was not a special permit A3 back in 1999. Then also, the property where Crow Point Pizzeria and Rich Hill Foods, et cetera, was not in common ownership with the property where this restaurant is going to be. So at the time, there were interesting wrinkles with respect to where the property lines were, and also there were some restrictions on a parking agreement. Those will all now be erased because the same Colly family owns both of the properties, and we're in the process of making that filing with the planning board now. So rather than have this license issued with that restriction, having it removed at the planning board and then having to return to modify the license, which is, you know, wouldn't just be through you folks, but basically through the ABCC process, we'd request that it just be issued without the restriction, and of course, we would be held to whatever the restrictions are that were issued by the planning board. With that, I can answer any questions that you may have?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're highlighting, I guess, my particular question because I did notice the lunch and hours, and then, you know, I really appreciate the supplementary materials with respect to the parking issue, and, you know, maybe this is a better question for Joe to ask, since he'll know more about the question and the answer. But Jeff, is it not premature then that we issue the license like this? You know, why wouldn't we wait for the planning board to act, and then we would act? Is there a timing issue with the ABCC with respect to the license?
No, I think what we've usually done is, when we go in for the licenses, we ask for periods of time, you know, to be issued. So for example, some of our clients say, well, you know, the license says that I can open from, you know, 10:00 to midnight hypothetically. Do I have to open at 10:00? And the answer is, oh, you know, no, that's, you know, those are the parameters within which you can operate, and you're not held to that. So that's the way that we're seeing this. If for some reason you folks said, no, we want to see this again in a, you know, in a month, you know, having the restrictions in place, you know, that's not something that I would oppose. I would just, you know, suggest that your time is going to be more valuable as we get into the summer, et cetera. But whatever is granted for the, you know, the license period of time, you know, whatever the planning board, you know, states shall be the limitations on it, that will actually control the use. So I think that the suggestion would be that this would be consistent where it comes across, you know, it comes across, and, you know, when we go to the planning board, we're certainly not going to say, well, the selectmen thinks it's a great, you know, think it's a great idea. It's just a count of the uses and when the uses occur. Back in 1999, there was not a recognition, well, there wasn't an A3 permit, first of all, but there also wasn't a recognition of, you know, the different uses existing at different times during the day, and that's all something that's, you know, that's now in place. Additionally, and I'll say this preliminary to Joe, because he's probably going to ask the question, what we're going to do as part of the planning board, and this is why it's taking a little bit of time, this hearing actually came up, you know, nice and quickly, is that John Cavanaro was going through, and we're making some slight grading changes. We're also going to make some changes that have to do with drainage, and because the two properties are in common ownership, we're not going to have to put parking spaces in hugging property lines. What we can do is we can more intelligently design where actual travel lanes can go, and then we can put the, you know, the spaces in such that we'll be able to generate a greater number of parking spaces than there were back in 1999. So that's what's happening now, and we haven't been able to file yet with the planning board, only because, you know, we're actually doing the grading and some of the more, you know, the detail work, if you will.
I appreciate that, and that certainly will improve that site. Let me just say two things, and then I'll turn it over to Joe. One is, you know, while I hear you on the, you know, while the jurisdiction of the planning board is the jurisdiction of the planning board and not the Board of Selectmen, I just, it feels funny to me that we would opine in a broader way before they've had a chance to, you know, take up the matter. But, you know, let's see how this evolves. And I guess the other question I'd just like to ask at this point in terms of introducing the topic is whether the police chief has any comments or thoughts that he'd like to add at this point before we begin our deliberations. Chief Olson?
Actually, a couple of different things. I don't have any complaints with the transfer of the license. There are qualified individuals, and I think that if we can clear up the parking issues over there, it would certainly be helpful.
Yeah.
Karen, this is Tom. I just had one comment.
Yep.
All right. Just as luck would have it for a future agenda item, we happen to have Mary Savage Dunham, planning, town planner, in the audience on the phone. So should you guys have questions that maybe she can help with? She's available.
Yeah, I just don't want to, I really don't want the board to stray into planning board issues, but I do appreciate that. And, you know, I'd just like to compliment the applicant and Sharon Prothedy on pulling together these materials because they were very helpful to the review of the application. So thank you. Joe Fisher, comments or questions?
Yes. Jeff, how are you doing?
Hi, Joe.
Could you just explain to me the impact of the prior separate ownership of the two properties and now the concurrent, the joint ownership of those two properties?
Yep. So what happened back in the day, if you'll remember, this property on Crow Point was owned by, do you remember Penny Collins? And she also had a, she had a nom de guerre. She was the person that Mark Grills found had dual identities.
Okay.
Interesting situation.
We don't have to go into that part.
No, well, it has to do with a little bit of the fight that went on. The two owners had entered into a common parking-type agreement, and which were how these got done back then. You'll remember that. And then as it came through, things got strange. She put up chains and things of that nature. So it limped through, but what happened was, as part of this, all of the spaces are kind of tucked into the small rectangle that is this property. So, you know, it's got a certain number of spaces, but then there were rights to use the other space. And then when you ran through the numbers with the parking spaces back then, it wound up that they determined that the lunches on the regular non-holiday, you know, workdays, that the numbers would just exceed what, you know, what's there in Section 5A.
Right.
But what's happened now is that the Colly family purchased both of the two properties. So now what they're going to be able to do is they're going to be able to go in and change the parking so that there's an area, for example, where a parking aisle definitely, you know, should be in a certain place, that now, you know, we're actually able to go in, make some grading changes so that that can be accommodated. Additionally, the backside of that Crow Point Plaza, which is, you know, where Crow Point Pizzeria and the Ondramat is, the back of that is, it's just kind of this flat painted wasteland of pavement. And it's just, I mean, it's got, it's got no real travel aisles, anything of that nature, and it just kind of spills into where the Frag Mities start on the north side of that. So what's happened is John, John Cavanaro has gone out there. He's worked really closely with the Colleys. If you know the Colleys, they live over on the corner of Main and Home, Meadows Lane, over near Paul Hilli's house, and they're longtime Hingham residents. They have a lot of commercial properties.
Jeff, 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 let me interrupt you, because I want to get to the point that I wanted to ask about, which is, is this license going to be dependent on 6 Crow Point Lane and 185, 193 Lincoln Street having, being under common ownership?
No. So it won't be dependent on the two being under common ownership, because right now, the 1999 special permit is in place.
Right.
And what that will do is, you know, until that's changed, that will have the restriction on the park, you know, on the parking back to 1999. So...
Right. But to address the issue of the parking, I thought there needed to be this co-ownership, this common ownership. I thought that's what you were...
I thought in order to do lunch, that's what you got to get to, right?
Right.
So we could do lunch on Saturday, Sunday, and on holiday weekdays.
On holiday weekdays, correct.
Other than that, no lunch.
Correct.
But if, but if you go before the planning board and the special permit A3 is approved, then you essentially have...
Yes, we anticipate that they'll remove that restriction, just because we're increasing the number of the spaces, and then also the A3 allows for, right on its face, you know, reduction of the parking requirements for the shared uses. So it's in line for all of that. So it just has to do with whether you folks want to issue it with the existing condition, which is fine. If that's a problem, then we'll just have to, you know, come back in after the, after we get through the A3. Or if it's just issued, you know, without the restriction, and, you know, the restriction of the planning board either remains or it doesn't, can speak for itself, I just suggest that that would be more efficient. But it's up to you folks. In this day of limited money, limited time, you know, the ABCC is not moving too quickly. That was my suggestion. If you folks aren't comfortable with that, we're fine with that.
Okay. Joe, further questions?
No, but I think, Karen, your point is correct, that I would not want to jump ahead of the planning board on this. And where I was going with Jeff is that, as I read this, it appeared that your new plan was dependent on both properties being in common ownership. And if that's the case, that could lead this board to require, as a condition of our permit, that the properties remain under common ownership.
Why?
And it sounds, you would not want to tie up the permit like that.
Yeah, I don't think I would. I'd rely if that was something that the planning board requires as part of the A3, and they certainly may. I think that that's something that, you know, would be more appropriate there as opposed to in the liquor license.
Okay. I don't have anything further.
Okay, thanks.
Good question.
Mary, any questions or comments?
First of all, I just want to say to the applicant that it's really nice to see that location opening up again, and it's unfortunate that the current circumstances are going to make that process difficult for you, but, you know, we'll look forward to it. Karen, I share the same concern you and Joe do, and kind of listening to the conversation, I'm a little concerned that, I don't want the, if the board decides to act on this tonight, I don't want that in any way to signal anything or to kind of have us playing out of position relative to the role of the planning board. So, you know, I was actually interested in particular in Joe's take on this as to whether, you know, we should do this without the restrictions or not.
I would carry over the restrictions.
Yeah, I think I would probably be inclined, Karen, to just personally follow Joe's lead on this. It's, the information's been really helpful from Jeff, but I think that's kind of where I'm headed on this.
Yeah, I guess I wonder, I wonder, I think my preference, to be honest with you, is to wait. I'd like to see the planning board act, and then I'd like to issue our license. And I guess I'm wondering, Jeff, if that creates a hardship, because I just think the back and forth with the ABCC doesn't serve anybody.
Yeah, it, you know, it's, I don't want to make it more difficult, and I did speak with, you know, with the applicants today, and I told them that you folks would have, you know, a full look at it from every different way. And, you know, I told them that it would, you know, there's a possibility that you folks would want to do it in two steps, and it's not a problem. It would just be kind of an efficiency thing. You know, what's funny is Mary mentioned, I mean, what's going to happen is things aren't going to move as quickly as anyone would like in any event, just because of the restrictions and, you know, as we go through the phases. So if we're able to get into the planning board soon, they've actually been real efficient in doing their hearings, so I don't think we'll lose any time.
On this call, how do I get...
By all means, by all means, I'll, you know, I'll defer to you.
We have a video, by the way, this, too, I...
So Karen?
Yeah, can I just say, for folks, just make sure you're muted, so for folks who weren't being recognized at this point. Yeah, Jeff, so I guess, you know, I've expressed my preference. I think that it would be helpful for me to have the planning board act and then be able to act on a license accordingly. You know, I just, for me, it just seems like a cleaner process. Go ahead, Joe.
It wasn't clear to me if you were suggesting that we take no action on this, because what I heard Jeff say is that he'd be comfortable with two steps. We act, and then we act again.
I prefer not, I prefer to do it once, and I frankly think that, from an efficiency standpoint, to me, I've heard the merits of this. I think hearing from the chief and reviewing the package in terms of all of the requirements to actually issue the liquor license part of this, I, you know, I don't know about you and Mary, I'm satisfied with all that. So, you know, to the extent it comes back to us, it's really just, I think, how the planning board has opined, and that would be reflected in, I think, the hours of operation for the liquor license that would go before the ABCC.
So Jeff, did you answer Karen's question as to whether it would be a hardship if we did, if we took no action tonight?
Oh, no action would definitely be a hardship. I thought, I thought what I was hearing was...
That's what I've been asking, Jeff.
Oh, I, oh, I thought you were asking whether the hardship would be if you folks instilled the restriction as opposed to, oh, it would be a tremendous hardship if there was no action. What I'm saying is, please, you, you know, continue the restriction on hours, have it issued, and then, you know, later on, after we're post-planning board, we'll, you know, we'll just go through the, you know, we'll go through the amendment process to change the hours.
So you're, are you envisioning kind of being up and running before you get through the planning board? Or you want to start this license process with the ABCC? I mean, what's the hardship?
Oh, I, yeah, we want to get it to the ABCC. It took us several months just to get a certificate of good standing for Cogshell from the DOR. Things happening at the state level are extremely slow. These folks going into the summer, they want to make sure that their license is, you know, they're in the pipeline so that their lease can go forward so that they can start to spend the money. Contractors are getting ready to go in there and do the work. They're getting ready to pull the permits, et cetera. Where this isn't in owner of, you know, owner of the property operator, I've got the, you know, I've got the landlord-tenant relationship, and I've got to get going on that so that, you know, the business part of the deal can all happen.
Okay, so I guess my preference then, so I'm certainly happy to take that action, but we would need to amend the hours that you're requesting then to be consistent with what's allowed currently at that site.
Yes.
So I don't know if we can do that on the fly, or whether that's something that we need to have Sharon help us pull together for next week and hear it and approve it next week. There's, you know, there's a possibility we're meeting later this week if everything's in order, and it's just a paperwork situation, you know, it's possible we could vote it then.
So is Sharon on the line with the existing license? I don't have the existing license in front of me now.
Hi, Jeff. This is Sharon.
Hi, Sharon.
Hi. So Crow's Landing had modified their hours a bit more.
Yeah, didn't they do a Sunday brunch, Sharon?
Yes, but they had changed their hours. They came before the board, I believe, June of 19, and changed their hours a bit. So I don't know if you want to go back to that, but their previous hours, they, I believe they had Monday through Thursday, 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Saturday, the same, 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Sunday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So it was the weekdays. So it was the weekdays, Monday through Friday, where they opened at 5:00 p.m.
Right. Except if I.
You have, the license in the packet, I believe, is showing their modified hours that they came back and asked for. But previous to that, they were open, I believe, every day. I would have to go back and check that.
But then there, according to the restriction, right, they could, they could serve lunch. I mean, the most common holiday would be Mondays, right? They could serve lunch on a holiday, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct.
So Jeff, I, well, it would be helpful for me, I think, to see the revised hours reflected on the application. And then, and then this language, I think we need to just craft some language about the holiday weekdays.
Yep. When is, okay, so timing for next, when's your next scheduled meeting? You folks are running out of time.
May 26.
Great. If we could do, if we could do that, that sounds like that would work well.
Okay. I mean, that would be my preference. I don't know where Mary and Joe are on this. But Joe, thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, thank you.
Jeff and I were talking past each other.
Right, sorry about that. I just, I do appreciate it. And we want it, we want it to be done right so that folks are comfortable with it.
Mary's on the line. Has this been scheduled with the planning board yet?
It has not.
Oh, okay. And Michelle, was I correct that May 26 is our next meeting?
Yes, it is.
Okay, yeah, so I think what Karen's proposing makes the most sense, that we put this off until the 26th of May, and that before the end of this week, we have the revised packet in hand so we can review it over the weekend.
That sounds great.
Yep. All right, that works for me. And, you know, like I said, I appreciate all of the effort to pull all of the pieces of paper together. I realize it's no easy task. I know Sharon, Sharon is so good at keeping that all organized so that we have the materials that we need in order to take the action that is required by the ABCC. So I do appreciate all the work that went into that. And to me, if we have these, the hour clarification, you know, for police chief, you know, I don't, again, speaking for me, I think it's a matter of, you know, confirming the hours of operation and then, you know, moving to a vote, so.
Super.
But while, while you're here, if my colleagues don't have any further questions, I'd like to open it up to the public to see if anybody has any questions or concerns with respect to this transfer. Mary and Joe, are you set for now?
I'm set.
I'm set, Karen, thank you.
Questions from the public with respect to the college transfer? Seeing none? Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate you all being here tonight. And again, all the work on this. And hopefully, we'll get this buttoned up on the 26th.
I'm Karen.
Sorry, Karen, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Karen, this is Ryan Thornton, the current owner of Cogus Hall Group, formerly doing business at Cogus Land.
Yep.
I just want to make it known on this call that we're still waiting for one final piece from the ABCC. The certificate of compliance, which I should be receiving any day now, so timing wise, in terms of everything being 100% complete from our standpoint, works well for next Tuesday.
Okay, great. And sorry, I didn't see your raised hand. I didn't scroll. I apologize for that.
No problem.
Any further questions or comments from the public with respect to this matter? Okay, great. Well, thanks, and thanks for that information, Ryan. And we will see you all next week on this.
Great, thanks. Glad everyone's well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye guys, bye bye.
All right, Joe, this is like your night tonight. We're moving into the discussion of the planning articles that will appear on the town warrant. And I think, as Mr. Mayo indicated, Mary Savage Dunham, our town planner, is on the line. And Mary, I don't know whether you could kind of take us through what's before us this evening?
Certainly, Karen. Actually, the chairman of the planning board, Bill Ramsey, is on the line, so I would defer.
Yeah, thanks. Bill, sorry about that.
No problem. Can anybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight on the zoning articles. You know, this year, we, you know, over the years, we've looked at approaching zoning articles in two different ways. Sometimes we look at zoning articles, and we try to be proactive in looking at zoning issues in town. And other times, we kind of, a little more reactive. We try to address problems or concerns that are brought to our attention. And I think the articles this year are kind of more on the reactive mode, and we're trying to fix some concerns that have been brought to us. And over, I guess, for the first one, which is Triple B, involves site plan review. And we have been, over the last couple of years, we've been kind of tweaking our site plan review procedures and just trying to improve them. Look at the, you know, we added some criteria. We looked at different threshold for triggering site plan review. And the article this year on site plan review proposes a reduction in the land area by construction from 20,000 square feet to 5,000 square feet. So the trigger for a site plan review would now be the 5,000 square feet. And the reason why we proposed this was the DPW, the chief of police, who I think is on the line, is going to speak to this article as well. And neighbors and abutters of different neighborhoods and communities brought to our attention problems with smaller or medium-sized construction projects where land alteration is increasing erosion of sediment and increasing stormwater runoff during construction. And so what we've seen is that the stormwater is not properly draining and causing icing in some areas of town. We've seen sedimentation erosion, block up drainage, drains, that causing icing as well. So what this article really does, it takes a different approach to these type of projects. And the applicant would now have clear guidance of, they would have to propose where this is triggered, a plan for dealing with the drainage issues and making sure that the burden is now on the applicant to ensure proper drainage and that our drains don't get backed up. And it really kind of presents the town and the planning board with erosion control guidelines that we think are pretty necessary. When we were debating this article, Mary, again, working with DPW and the police department, brought about, I think it was eight or nine different examples that really kind of called for us to take some action here. And we kind of hope this starts to address some of those problems.
Okay. Why don't we do this, Bill? I know we have, we have a few articles before us, but I think they're, to me, they're pretty technical. So for me, it would help us if we go kind of one by one, unless you have some overarching comments you'd like to make. Maybe I'd open it up for questions, you know, article by article, if that's okay with you.
Perfect, yep, no problem.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't think I would add it. I would like, I think the chief wanted to speak to this as well, but I'm not.
Okay, Chief Olson?
Yes, hi, this is Chief Olson. Thank you for asking me about this. This is an article that I think we tried to actually enact a little bit last year. One of the concerns that the police department has been having is that as we, as a town is starting to rip down smaller buildings on smaller lots and build larger buildings on them in densely packed neighborhoods, it often causes issues amongst the neighbors. There's not a lot of room for traffic. There's erosion out onto the streets. The runoff is not always the way it goes. And often, some of these projects have resulted in expenses of the police department and the highway department going out and having to sand particular spots in the town that, you know, on Travel Beale Street, Travel Shop Street, you'll see some of these runoff areas. And there's certain areas that this occurs in that are continuous. And it's, some of it's a result of construction and alterations that were made unknown to many of us. And we hope that by allowing this to expand, it's something that we can head off before we have meetings before we identify some of the issues and we work with the building contractors and the neighbors to make sure that the experience is a little bit easier on everybody. I think it works pretty well.
Okay, thank you. So Joe, do you have questions with respect to what's titled warning article BBB site plan review?
Yes, thank you. And thanks to the planning board for addressing this, because this is an important concern. Bill or Mary, what are the application fees associated with site plan review?
Oh, thank you, Bill. Site plan review application fee right now is $500. However, for waivers of site plan review, there's actually no charge. One of the things that the planning board is looking at with our kind of continual improvement process for these site plan review applications is further refining it next year with more of a limited site plan review application. But that said, our site plan review fees are not in our bylaw, so we do have the opportunity to review them with the selectmen, certainly.
Yeah, I mean, since we're dealing with, in some cases, what will be very small projects, and the costs add up, I'm just concerned about making sure that we're looking at the impacts of what's being proposed. And I recognize that the need for this. Would this work out that there could be an application for site plan review where sort of a preliminary determination, so it doesn't have to go to a full-blown hearing? There'd be various gradations, almost the way the conservation commission does it?
Correct. I mean, what we're trying to do is really identify and head off potential problems during the planning stage. So our intention is that by lowering the threshold, we will intervene and basically prompt the conversation with the applicant earlier in the process before there's work done. And at that point, really, the applicant has the ability to request waivers of any or all of the site plan review criteria. And staff will be able to talk with the applicant earlier in the process, determine what the particulars of that project are. To your point, Joe, a site plan review project may be triggered if, you know, for expensive site landscaping, for example.
Right.
However, when that applicant is told to talk to the planning department about site plan review, and they come and they speak to myself or one of my colleagues, we'll ask them questions about the project. And it may be that they're eligible to request a waiver of 90%, and the planning board would encourage them to install appropriate erosion controls.
Right, exactly.
Site. I mean, not every site plan review conversation with the planning board for these types of projects is intended to be a full-blown site plan review that you're used to seeing.
Right.
The real intent is to have a dialogue.
Do you have the authority? Has the planning board given you the authority to act sort of as a mini hearing reviewer and make a decision before referring it to the full planning board? Or would the planning board itself have to grant the waiver?
I have the authority to grant some waivers, not these waivers. We did discuss that, but we weren't able to submit that language this year. It would have been, you know, a broadening of the scope.
Right.
So the planning board does intend to bring that back, I believe, next year for discussion. We just didn't want to, we couldn't expand the scope, but that is on our radar. What typically happens now, Joe, is if it's a project that I don't have the ability to waive, the applicant will reach out to me and speak to me. I'll provide my guidance to them, and they'll be on a planning board agenda for a conversation. If it's a project that, in my experience, they're likely to be successful requesting relief, I typically encourage them to talk to the board before they invest significantly in plans, et cetera.
Right, okay.
And if I could just add to that too, Joe, you know, those issues you raised, we talked about those in detail. We talked about, you know, an addition in our town unfortunately can be very expensive. And we talked about, you know, the additional costs that a homeowner would now have to bear with an additional review. We also, I also brought up the point about our docket, and our docket's already quite active. And now, will we going to add a more burdensome review process to our docket? So we did briefly discuss administrative procedural review by Mary and a vetting process to kind of address the bigger problems and allow the non-problems to move along swiftly.
Great. So I encourage those discussions, and I have no further questions. Thank you.
Great. Mary Power?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions on this article. This has been a helpful explanation. And Joe, I appreciate the questions.
Yeah, and Joe, you were kind of following along with me and Bill's comments as well. I just, I certainly am concerned about erosion control and stormwater runoff during construction projects. This represents a very, very significant change from, you know, the $20,000, a 20,000 square foot threshold. Bill, I'm wondering if you could kind of take me through why you settled on 5,000 square feet? And I got to be honest, I'm just, I'm uncomfortable that the administrative waiver process is not embedded in the bylaw change.
Yeah, the 5,000 square foot was done through maps and data that Mary presented at a series of meetings where she, she put together Mary presented at a series of meetings where she, uh, she put together some great maps, outlined the different parts of the town and, um, you know, where this is kind of an issue and we've kind of seen it all over town. Uh, so the square footage was really a result of us going through those maps over a course of certain, uh, several meetings and seeing, you know, where can we use this to best address the problem? And the administrative review, um, which is, which is also a very good point, um, we discussed it and I believe Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, that you and Susan talked about we, we should do that more through internal rules and regulations opposed to embed it in the bylaw. Uh, we were nervous about getting outside of the scope, um, this year, but I, I believe the board after discussing it is, is pretty intent on, um, probably embedding that in the bylaw next year. Obviously it can't speak for next year at board, but, um, it's certainly something going forward that we, that we had in mind and we discussed in pretty good detail.
I just think that, you know, I, I think people come forward, right, and they wanna comply and I think we, we try to create processes where they understand what the rules are and they can comply with the rules. Um, and, and like Joe indicated, you know, $500 is a pretty steep fee for a project that just trips over this square footage, you know, with all of the other attending costs of taking this on. So I, I, you know, I, I think the conversations, as Mary pointed out, are, are beneficial for everybody and, you know, unless you're required to, it's not like you need to come, come in and sit down with the planning board folks, but I, I'm, I'm really concerned about making sure that, making sure that we're very careful in assessing a full site plan review fee in connection particularly with smaller scale projects and, you know, I, I, it'd be interesting to see the discussion at town meeting. I, you know, I'd certainly appreciate the intent that you, at least administratively and internally, would, you know, come up with, uh, protocols to allow the community planning director to assess these, um, projects.
Uh, I'm gonna open it up to questions from the public unless Joe or Mary have further comment?
Nope.
Okay. Um, anybody from the public, uh, like to make a comment or ask a question with respect to the site plan review article from the planning board? Deirdre Anderson.
Thank you, uh, thank Karen. I just wanna, uh, speak in support of this planning article. Um, I had an opportunity to sit on, on an HTC call last week about a property where, you know, had this, um, such a, you know, change to our bylaws been in place, um, it was the second time the historic districts commission has reviewed a project. So I understand, you know, considering the cost for site plan, you know, permit applications for applicants, but I also wanna highlight the town costs to time invested for either violations to the current site plan, uh, you know, the 20,000 square foot, um, level and, you know, time spent when situations have already been reviewed and then the, uh, property is clear cut.
Yep.
So I just wanted to say that in support.
Thank you. Uh, further questions or comments from the public with respect to the site plan review article? Thanks. Mary?
Uh, yes, Karen, I just wanted to add on to your question about the square footage area. Um, when the planning board was taking a look at the thresholds and through the lens of listening to our colleagues at the police department, the building commissioner, DPW, with regard to cost of enforcement and mitigation and also, um, public safety concerns with the icing, we, um, have two thresholds that trigger site plan review and one is alteration of drainage patterns over a steep slope and that's 2,500 square feet. The planning board set that aside. They looked at the other threshold, which was alteration of a drainage pattern over 20,000 square feet. And if it's a residential project, it typically didn't trigger site plan review. And what the planning board did was they took a, a look at a property map of the town, which we have and it's up on the planning board website under the zoning articles. It shows the parcels areas, uh, parcels by size in like gradations. So you can take a look and see which ones are under the, uh, 5,000 square feet, which are between five and seven and a half thousand square feet. Um, the planning board was really concerned last, when they looked at this threshold issue about impacting one section of town too strenuously. And so when we looked at it on the map and the planning board saw that every parcel that was shaded in was under that 20,000 square foot threshold and they were spread throughout town. And it's a possibility of 35% of the parcels in town. So 35% of the parcels in town, if the town is flat as a pancake, could, up to 20,000 square feet and it wouldn't have any, um, oversight or kind of, um, review by staff until and unless there was a drainage or siltation problem. And typically the town gets those by virtue of either accidents or neighbor disputes, you know, someone becomes flooded or impacted. And so when we started to look at those thresholds like that and you realize that the planning board is having, you know, broad oversight over impacts on neighbors for these big projects, but we get the most complaints from these smaller projects that perhaps have, um, maybe less experienced contractors or maybe they're a home builder, but they're not a site contractor. That started to really have the board think about reducing the threshold. So, you know, I, I don't know if that answers your question a little bit about the thought process that the board went through, but I'm happy to send that, you know, map to you all for further review. And it was very informative that there's such a broad section of the town where, um, you know, a little bit of review and guidance at the start of the project might, uh, really be less expensive than going back and trying to fix something after the fact. Um, so that was part of the perspective about lowering the threshold.
So at, at 5,000 square feet with no elevation requirement, how, uh, what's your sort of ballpark of the percentage of parcels across the town that would be swept up in this, um, in, in this site plan review requirement?
If the town lowers the threshold to 5,000 square feet, then 97% of the parcels in town would be required to, at a minimum, have a conversation with staff about erosion and control and grading, um, of some degree. Not all, uh, as we discussed earlier, not all projects require the same level of discussion. Uh, but certainly if you're putting in a retaining wall, um, on Harborview Drive and filling in your entire backyard to build a new house, that project might, you know, merit greater scrutiny from the permitting boards to make sure the people at the bottom of the hill, um, don't have flooding issues.
Yep, yep, okay. I mean, I guess, right, um, I, I think for me, the trust piece of this is just in the office of community planning and the planning board, you know, utilizing their discretion in a way that, that is not, that, that enforces the concept without, I think, being overly burdensome to small project applicants.
Yes, duly, duly noted. I mean, Karen, if somebody's doing a septic system and a landscaping project on a flat property.
Right.
That requires silt funds. I mean, you know, our goal is to not be onerous, it's actually to try to be helpful.
Right, and, right, okay. Joe, I'm sorry. Yeah.
So, um, and Mary and, and Bill as well, I just wanna make sure I understand it. So right now, the planning board's regulations, or actually the zoning bylaw, um, has a provision concerning minor site plans and, uh, that would encompass modifications to the site, which in the planning board's determination do not materially or adversely affect conditions governed by the site plan review standards. So it's, am I correct, Mary, that not every project is gonna require the full blown site plan? You, you already have in the zoning bylaw, a definition of a minor site plan.
We do, we have that provision now. I'm not yet empowered to act on those. That would be the next step that the board might consider next year. Right now, the minor site plans, um, are in there and they come to the board and, um, that's when the board can grant a full waiver or partial waivers, which they do frequently.
So, so there's, I wanna separate out, so there's the question about whether it's minor or not, and that's independent of who's doing the review. So what I was saying is that the current zoning bylaw with respect to, um, site plan allows, currently provides for minor site plan review.
Yeah.
By the board, not by you, but it's, it's, it's a lesser degree, uh, than what many people would review as a, would, many people would view as a full site plan review. The, the second aspect, which would be your role, the current, uh, bylaw specifically now says that the planning board made by a majority vote of the board establish an administrative process for site plan review. Um, and basically they could delegate that to you. So the current bylaw allows for that. Are you saying that the board has not yet acted to do that administrative delegation?
They've delegated, um, administrative review for the site plan reviews in association with building permits.
Right.
But for these, um, erosion control and stormwater projects, they haven't yet, what the board had talked about was putting a provision for limited site plan review probably in the bylaw. Um, it's, you know, we're going to learn from our experiences this year and then, you're right, the board could modify their rules and regulations or they could modify the bylaw.
So, well, um, well, the board couldn't modify the bylaw. Um, they can modify their own internal regulations, but the regulations currently allow the planning board to delegate to you the authority to determine whether or not a project constitutes a minor site plan. That's the current bylaw. So has the planning board made that delegation to you yet?
No.
Okay, so I think in keeping with this discussion, if we're going down to 5,000, um, square feet, it would be helpful to get a read on whether you think the planning board is likely to make that delegation, because I think that will address sort of the administrative ease process and, uh, hopefully reduce, uh, the potential burdens while still make, making sure that there's vigilance with respect to these types of projects. So I don't know if Bill or you can comment on that.
Uh, yeah, I can comment on that. I, I do think that the board will, um, go, go venture down that road just simply because of, um, again, our, the docket will get filled with.
Exactly.
Projects that don't need us.
Right.
Exactly.
When we, you know, we're meeting every Monday night to begin with and, you know, when 10 o'clock rolls around and we're still talking about things that we could have been dealt with internally, I think the board will quickly realize.
Right.
You know, Mary can take care of this pretty easily.
Okay, great. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, so not to, not to just beat this into the ground, but for minor site plan review or frankly, any other sort of more modest review, there's no automatic reduction in the fee? It's a waiver that would need to be granted by the board, Mary?
Yeah, there's no automatic reduction in the fee.
Okay, but is it the tendency of the board to grant waivers sort of commensurate with, you know, for lack of a better word, like the work entailed by the planning board? Well, a- again, I'm just, 500 bucks is a lot of money to add on to, you know, a small project. So I just, I just wanna be clear that we're, we've got a more sort of graded approach to, uh, to our fee schedule, you know, whether discretionary or otherwise.
Yeah, so that would be something that we can talk about with the planning board. Um, we haven't gone down that road to a great extent, but I think that that's a conversation that we could have with the chair and the board.
Okay, I, I guess, again, I, now that we're, we're talking about scooping up almost every property in town, should, should have, you know, should there be some modest project? That's all, that's all fine, appreciate the fact that the conversation's educational for everybody and ultimately results in a, hopefully a better process all the way around, but, um, I just wanna make sure that the fee is commensurate with, um, with the obligations that the town undertakes with respect to the project.
And if I can just, I'm sorry, Karen, if I can just add to that, that, in my view, the fee that's being paid to the town, the $500 is, is not the real burden financially, it's that, it's the submittal requirements, you know, preparing scale, the dimensional plans.
Right, right.
Yeah, so there's a lot of work there, um, grading plans. Um, so, uh, yeah, all that needs to keep, be kept in perspective with respect to the particular project. Yep.
Yeah, and again, I, yeah, I, I trust that our colleagues on the planning board will continue to work it out in the spirit in which we're discussing it tonight because it's, you know, I think again, um, the, the more the process is, is observed as being fair, I think the, the sort of, the more kind of upfront buy-in we get from the town in understanding that this is an important issue for the community as a whole. Okay, well, uh, moving on to zoning article CCC, the downtown overlay district, Mr. Ramsey.
Yeah, so article CCC, downtown overlay district, um, the intent here is to clarify the requirement for mixed-use commercial, uh, residential buildings and, um, really to provide a clear direction to applicants and property owners regarding the percentage requirement for first floor commit, commercial, uh, within, uh, the overlay district. Now, re, the reason for this article, um, a couple different, uh, points of discussion are, you know, applicants have asked, you know, what's the, what's, what's the right percentage that we need to come in at? Uh, we've had a couple of projects over the last couple of years where we've seen, um, a marginalization of the commercial requirement and a heavier, um, emphasis on the residential for, for a lot of different reasons. And so the board felt like, you know, we need to, we should give applicants clear guidance on, um, a percentage of commercial, keeping, um, in line, you know, keeping in mind the spirit of the overlay district, which was to, uh, encourage, you know, uh, commercial stores on the first floor and a walkable downtown. So, um, as Mr. Fisher knows, the, the Board of Appeals is really the, um, the board that decides this issue and determines this issue. So when we came up with our discussion points, the board felt that, you know, the language we would put in this article would be not less than 65% of the linear width, uh, facing the street, and not less than 55% area of the ground floor. Now, we have, you know, as we, we talked, we talked about the importance of a safe, a safeguard or a safety valve to allow, to allow the Board of Appeals to, um, assert some discretion and authority here as well. So we included in the article that the ZBA would be able to go down to 40%, um, should the planning board parking determination force an applicant to have less, um, linear width or ground area, or the ZBA in its determination, um, finds that the construction for the building is, uh, in conformity with the purpose of the overlay district. So, you know, we, I'll look at this as an opportunity to kinda clarify, um, what we're looking for and to give applicants some guidance. And the only other point I'd make, uh, too, is we talk about, you might think it's odd that we mentioned Station Street and we specifically, um, specifically parsed out Station Street because it's not an accepted way and we certainly wanted to give, uh, owners of properties facing Station Street the opportunity to, um, utilize this as well. So, um, that's kinda just an overview of it and I'm happy to field any questions.
Uh, Joe, questions with respect to the downtown overlay district article?
Uh, I, I think the planning board is, has done a good job. Um, one of the issues that, uh, we had to deal with the zoning board is to the extent that first floor areas needed to be used for residential purposes because the intended occupants were needed handicapped accessibility and their limited mobility really required first floor use for residential reasons. Uh, to what extent did the planning board, did the planning board consider those issues in coming up with these percentages?
So, um, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we specifically addressed that issue, but we definitely wanted to, um, I think that would fall, Joe, in this situation, like that would probably fall under, um, the second criteria of the safety valve, where the ZBA can make a finding that, yeah, this is still, still in keeping with, uh, the intent of the overlay district, but I don't think we specifically addressed that issue, Mary. Am I correct?
Well, we did discuss, we were talking about the percentage of the ground floor area that had to be commercial. We did, um, not specifically say for handicapped access, but we acknowledged that there had to be some access, whether it's an elevator or staircase and in some cases, um, the parking. Um, so that's why the requirement for the percentage of commercial on the ground floor area is at 55%. Um, and we acknowledge that not every site or assemblage of properties in the downtown overlay is created equal, right? Most of them are smaller and.
Right, and, and some of the buildings simply cannot accommodate sort of the, the nice elevator that you'd see in, in new structures. These are, you know, old buildings that, uh, it'd be a real challenge to, to make the second floor handicapped accessible.
Exactly.
Yeah, and just to add to that, you know, when we, we looked at this article and the different areas downtown, Joe, we, you know, we, you, you think of downtown as being relatively flat and it generally is, but then you have, you know, different buildings and structures that are in downtown that topographically kind of are a little unique and peculiar. So we, we discussed like, for example, like the post office building is, you know, a little unique and some other buildings we have down there and we want to make sure that, um, we kind of allowed some, uh, flexibility here to allow the Board of Appeals. We kind of allowed some flexibility here to allow the Board of Appeals to kind of use its discretion to get to where it needs to get to.
Yep. Thank you. I've got nothing else.
Thank you. Mary, questions with respect to the downtown overlay, overlay district article?
Yeah, thank you. Bill and Mary, I was just curious during the, during the hearings on this article, did, you know, did you have people who came and offer an opinion one way or the other as, as to this article?
Yeah, we did. We had a decent amount of participation. That actually was, was, was very helpful to the article. Ben Wilcox came a couple of times. He offered some situations that we hadn't considered. And generally, it was pretty supportive. There was no one who really came to speak in opposition to it. It was more along the line of comments and have you considered this, this area of downtown? Have you considered that area of downtown? Which allowed us to kind of work with adding flexibility to it.
So it sort of sounds like during the process, you know, you had, you had interested people who came who just kind of helped, helped sort of shape it.
Absolutely. It was actually, it was very helpful and, you know, there were a couple of other people spoke, but particularly Ben Wilcox was, was offered some really great advice on, on, on working through this.
And Bill, just out of curiosity, were the people who came, were they, you know, were they residents? Were they commercial property owners? Did you have both? I mean, I, I know that this has been a, this has been an issue that's come up a few times downtown and I know there were, you know, strong feelings about it.
I don't recall a lot of residents speaking. I, I think there might have been a couple of commercial property owners, but Mary, do you remember specifically who, who might have spoke up at the meetings?
I remember Peter Bickford was there and I remember Ben was there. What I recall is that the people that spoke were speaking and sharing their knowledge of the variability of the properties downtown. And I will just echo what Bill said is that it was very helpful to the planning board because it just highlighted the need to have a relief valve in place to, to, you know, support the redevelopment without being too restrictive. It was a really good collaborative conversation.
Okay, thank you very much, Karen. I don't have any further questions on this article. Thanks, Mary. My one comment is I do appreciate the safety valve because as you indicated, I think to, to write this too stringently with the varied character of the downtown overlay district, you know, unduly potentially ties our, our hands or ties the hands of the zoning board. And, you know, while at the same time, I think you're absolutely right, giving some direction to folks who are, who are trying to develop in that district. So I appreciate that work. Questions or comments from the public with respect to the downtown overlay district article? Not seeing any raised hands. So Bill, if you would, could we move on to Article DDD abandonment or discontinuance of non-conforming single-family and two-family dwellings?
This is probably our most technical article of this cycle. And in full disclosure, it's a ZBA article that Emily and the ZBA brought to us and presented a couple of times on it. And so to affront Emily, definitely subject matter expert, expert on this one, but the article more clearly states that a conforming, single or two-family dwelling use may be reestablished in a dimensionally non-conforming structure that had been abandoned or discontinued for two years. Now, discontinued, meaning that not used or occupied. So the, the intent of the article is really to try to correct non-conformities. And we wanted to be sure that we didn't add a non-conformity to an existing non-conformity. So that's why we kind of settled on language that would allow the re-establishment in a dimensionally non-conforming structure under some of the, under some of the guidelines in the article. And the amendment also restricts changes to the building or structure to those that maintain or improve the non-conforming dimensions and add or expand in compliance with the, with the current height, current height or yard requirement. So that's a little bit of an overview and I guess Mary and I will do our best to answer any technical questions and, Joe, please go easy on us with this one. You may remember it, Joe, because I think this was, this was around when you were on the board.
Yes.
Okay, well, with that, with that introduction, Joe, let's see what you got.
No, it's, I think they, they did a great job. And Bill, am I correct that when we're talking about protecting the, the non-conforming structures, this is, this is for residential use. This is for single-family and two-family dwellings. We're not talking about a non-conforming commercial use.
You are correct, yes.
Right, and I think that's important because it, you know, part of the goal here is to make sure that to the extent that there's housing that should be there and there has been a discontinuation of that, that the housing can be restored. It's not that other commercial structures can go in in a non-conforming way. And I think another important distinction, and Bill, correct me if I'm, if I've got this wrong, is that the abandonment does not apply to demolition. So if a building is demolished, then the ability to go back and now restore it in a non-conforming way has been lost.
Correct, yes.
And I think that's, that's an important aspect of this, that to me gives assurance that this is going to be used in the proper way. So I really think that the language here makes sense. I think the planning board and the zoning board have done a good job here, so I really don't have any further questions.
Great. Mary, questions on the abandonment article?
Just a question. I don't know if this is for Joe or for Bill or for Mary, but what prompted this? It, it sounds like it was, it was sort of a request from the ZBA, but I'm, you know, I, it's been my experience that, you know, sometimes, Joe, these articles come about because of, of a situation where something is problematic or it's not clear. What, what was the trigger for this one?
Mary, you are very perceptive. That, that's right. I mean, the zoning board has on several occasions had a, a home, non-conforming, and then someone is out of state for a while and arguably, there's been a discontinuance. They now want to come back to their home and are they allowed to? Has that residential use been discontinued? Has it been abandoned? And we've spent time arguing, well, you know, did they keep the utilities running? And, and I think that this handles that sort of issue. So it's those sorts of cases that, at least in my experience, was the genesis for this zoning amendment.
Thank you. Great, thank you. I, I've had my questions answered. Questions or comments from the public with respect to the abandonment and discontinuance article? Seeing none, we move to the last planning board article of the evening, the updated flood, floodplain map references. Bill?
All right, so Article EEE is, over the past couple of years, the town has seen similar proposed articles that simply are intended to update the floodplain map references to the most current mapping that we received from FEMA. So the reason for this article and what the reason for the articles in the past have really been a requirement for the town's membership of the National Flood Insurance Program. And this update in conformance, conformity with the, with the FEMA guidelines is necessary for allowing residents to be eligible for federal floodplain insurance. So that's really the main thrust here is to try to protect residents and ensure eligibility for insurance if, if and when it is needed.
Great, thank you. Joe?
I've got no questions on this.
Mary?
No questions.
So Bill, would I be right in saying, does the, does the, to the, does the bylaw automatically update as the FEMA map is updated?
I do, I do not believe in updates. We have to, do, we have to enact the updates at town meeting to ensure compliance, but Mary, is that correct?
That's correct. That's why we have this kind of recurring article and, and this is to make the bylaw updated.
Yep, it's not automatic. That's correct.
Okay. I, I mean, I know that there's some legislation on the table now in this, in this environment that would allow the Board of Selectmen to perform this update. Is that right, Tom Mayo?
Yes, it is. I spoke with Joan and Pat earlier today, Joan Moschino and Pat O'Connor, and both are advocating for that outcome at a hearing on Thursday.
And if, if the Board of Selectmen were to perform the update, is that, is the, does the bylaw pick up on that? It doesn't matter. It just matters that the map was formally updated according to the statute. Doesn't matter that it's not a legislative update?
So this, this, that's a very good question. This bylaw change would still need to go forward. We're hopeful that the legislation passes so that the select board can accept these maps so that we're in compliance with the NFIP. But we still need to go through the town meeting process to update the bylaw. So I don't think it's an either/or.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure that this was, that there was no additional complexity if there were changes in the legislation. It sounds like that's not the case.
No, I'm, I'm hopeful that the legislation moves forward.
Great. Okay, Joe and Mary, you're all set. Questions from the public with respect to the updated floodplain map references from the public? Seeing none, I think that would conclude this discussion and my understanding is we don't vote these articles. Right, they've, they've gone before the advisory committee and will appear in the warrant.
Right.
Yep.
Okay, well, Mary, thank you. Mary Savage, thank you for all your hard work and Bill, you as well, please thank the planning board for their thoughtful presentations. I think you, you have that difficult job of, I think, crafting very, very technical regulations for folks while, you know, trying to embrace the, the policy implications. So I appreciate that thoughtful analysis.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good talking to everybody. Have a good night.
You as well. Okay, we will move now to the Hingham Harbor Walk historical signage and I think Bruce Macaloney is on the line to take us through the presentation this evening.
Yes, thank you very much for adding me on to the agenda so quickly. I appreciate it. Hopefully Michelle has forwarded you all the graphics that I have forwarded to her. This is my second appearance before you. I was here about a year ago exactly for the first round of Hinger of the Harbor Walk signage. 1A, 1B, 1C, and now we're talking about the next three set of slides on the original diagram of 2A, 2B, 2C. So hopefully you have that diagram in front of you in the package.
We do.
Yes, so if, as we continue, we've gone through, it was originally started with the Bating Beach. So it's gone through the Bating Beach Trustees, the Harbor Development Committee Hingham Historical, and thank you very much for Hingham Historical. I know Dorothy and Deegra's on the line and without them and Amy McIntyre, none of this would have happened. We went in front of the Conservation Commission, got approval, and you have a copy of the certificate of appropriateness that was voted on recently by historic districts approving both the content and the placement of the signs. We're using the same structure as 1A, 1B, 1C, so it's the same vendor and the same physical structure, which I also included in the, the package. So I can go through the signs, answer any questions that you wish, but the idea is 2A, 2B, 2C are placed, 2A is around the bandstand. It talks about, the sign talks about the evolving waterfront and how it got to where it is now. And it's going to be, so you look out over the inner harbor. Sign 2B. I heard a question.
No, no, please continue.
Right, that sign 2B is going to be right in front of the Victory Statue and it talks about shipbuilding because Hingham Harbor was, if you go through the history, I mean, all of Hingham contributed to the shipbuilding in Hingham Harbor and I wanted to have the, the pull in all those other sites. Maybe there's more signs in the future elsewhere in Hingham as a result of this, but pull in more of the parts of Hingham that contributed to Hingham Harbor. In the final slide, sign 2C actually is at the foot of North Street, looking back up North Street. And it talks about how downtown Hingham has changed over, over a period of time. So that's the gist of the, of the, of the signs and it's been a collection. There'll now be six signs installed in the Hingham Harbor, Inner Harbor.
Great, thank you, Bruce. Joe, questions with respect to the harbor signage?
No, I appreciate the work. It looks good. I note that there will be no external lighting or internal illumination of these signs. Is that correct?
It's a non-lit passive sign.
And one other question with respect to lighting that just occurred to me is, to what extent are these signs reflective? So that is people, are people driving down, you know, driving down 3A, will the headlights cause glare reflection off these signs?
So it's a high-pressure laminate matte finish. It's not highly glossy. If you look at the signs now, I don't know what the, there's a number on reflection on signs. I don't know what the number is on these signs, but it's a matte finish. Not highly reflected.
Right, great. And I'll ask a leading question. I assume that all these signs have been spell-checked.
Well, due to a great input last year, I reached out to Rick Swanson. Rick Swanson reached out to Mary Andrews. Mary Andrews reached out to Zach Raymond and not only have these signs been spell-checked, they've been grammar-proofed. Thank you, Dorothy, for having a great Hingham High School system. And they meet their satisfaction of passing grammar and it's not the intent to have the words changed from this point on, from the signs.
Thank you. I've got nothing else.
Great, Mary, questions?
No, I just wanted to say, Bruce, it was great. A year ago, I remember that, that we talked about some signs. I think I may have mentioned at that point that our family is a boating family and when we go to other communities, there are often signs such as the ones that we're considering tonight. We've seen them in Marblehead, we've seen them in Situate, we've seen them down on the Cape and on more than one occasion, you know, we've sort of said, gee, I wonder if we could do something like that in Hingham. So I really appreciate the Harbor Development Committee taking this on. I think it's really going to enhance the, the harbor area. And I appreciate the collaboration and the process that you went through to bring these signs to us. You know, from our perspective, knowing that you've, you know, talked to the historic, to the historic commission that you've, you know, engaged some of our school colleagues in, in taking a look. Just, I think, speaks to a very, very well-done process, so I will look forward to seeing those down, down on the harbor soon.
Thanks, Mary. Yeah, I'd like to echo both those remarks. I think the signs are incredibly well-done. I'm really excited about them. And I think the, the package that you pulled together, including all of the approvals and the involvement of folks, you know, kind of across the community, it really, you know, makes our job much easier at this point in time. So So I'm assuming none of these are on the Bating Beach property, or are they?
So I sat down with Lonnie. I know there's some discussion with where things are. But Bating Beach Trustees have approved both the content and the placement of all the signs.
Great, okay. Great, thank you. Questions from the public with respect to Hingham Harbor Walk Historical signage?
Oh, Karen, let me just chime in. It's Bill Reardon. I've listened to the presentation and I have the drafts of the signs here. I can't see you all. I'm just on sound here. But I just want to express my appreciation as Chair of the Harbor Development Committee to Bruce, who led this subcommittee, has done this now for two years running in what has become a very thoughtful, careful putting together of a package that is going to really redound to the town's credit. I think you probably know that there's planning to continue with this. So you can expect that you'll see more of these. And if Bruce continues to do the great job he's been doing, we will be, we will be very fortunate. Because I think these are some of the best signs that I've seen in a number of towns, including the city of Boston, that we've seen to date. Bruce really got the materials and the look right.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Bill. Questions from the public with respect to the Harbor Walk signage? Okay, thank you, everybody. We need to take a vote on that this evening.
I'd make a motion to authorize the Harbor Development Committee to install three Harbor Walk Historical signs on parcels under the care and control of the Board of Selectmen in Hingham Harbor, consistent with the application to the Historic District Commission for a Certificate of Appropriateness dated April 16, 2020, provided that there shall be no external lighting or internal illumination of these signs.
Second. All those in favor, say aye. Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Fantastic.
Karen, can I just jump in real quick? This is Tom. I think the Harbor Development Committee is also hoping for a waiver of the permit fees. Is that right, Bill?
Yes, I am. I've requested that the building fees be waived.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Karen. I didn't get onto the vote list. I apologize.
And that's not part of the fees that you can waive administratively, right?
I'm happy to do so. I'd have to go back and look if I can. You're right. I think we did that last time, right?
Yeah. Is Michelle on the line? Michelle, we crafted a vote. I thought we took a, well, look, we can.
I believe we covered for all of FY '20 right now. We'd have to take a new vote for '21.
So we're good through the end of June. You're right, Karen.
Okay, okay. I mean, I'm certainly happy to vote, but I think you have the authority to waive it.
Yep, you're absolutely right.
Okay. All right. And if that's not the case, we'll take it up. We'll take it up next time. Okay, anything further with respect to the Harbor signage?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for being on the line. And thanks for all the hard work.
Did you vote?
They did, Bruce.
We did vote, yep. So there's a unanimous vote on the placement of the signs. And my understanding is the town administrator has the authority to waive the permit fees. And if that's not the case, we will certainly take that up and do so.
Yeah, and I'll take care of that tomorrow, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Public comment for items not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none. Appointments? Hearing none. I move to Town Administrator and Selectmen Reports. Michelle?
Hello? Karen, do you want, should we do the COVID update now?
Oh, sorry, I skipped that, didn't I? I'm sorry about that. Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, Tom, you want to start us off?
Sure, sure.
Did you have a question, a comment, a question? Start?
Sure, I recognize you, Dr. Gallo.
Okay, I really came tonight because I thought there might be a discussion on the agenda. On the agenda, there was a suggestion of comment about the town meeting, the warrant in particular. And so I came hoping that I would hear something more about town meeting. And quite honestly, I listened very intently and have read a lot in the last 24 hours to the governor yesterday and really was disappointed that there didn't seem to be any guidance or any discussion, either in his comments or in the writing, that would give cities and towns guidance in terms of events like a town meeting. And so I'm wondering whether or not you anticipate getting any guidance from the state on that matter and what other towns are doing about the town meeting if only 10 people can continue to congregate together for some lengthy future.
Yep. Yep. I'm sorry, Dot, I interrupted you.
No, I was going to say, but in the context of talking about town meeting, because I thought there was going to be a possible agenda item about the warrant. That might be a broader discussion. But as I listened to that last zoning article, floodplain map thing, I didn't comment because obviously it's something that we just need to do. And, you know, it's a routine matter. However, I always worry as we're approaching town meeting about any, trying to think through any questions that could arise at the town meeting that were not anticipated because they weren't really germane to why we were putting something forward, not having seen floodplain maps. You can probably see where I'm going with this. Are there any significant changes that someone, that someone at town meeting is going to ask a pointed question about? And do we need to be sure that people who could be impacted by this are properly advised that?
Well, I think you've asked a number of questions in there. So I might ask if Mary Savage Dunham is still on the line. I don't think so.
Yeah, I think Lonnie Fournier was on the phone, Karen, for the floodplain map. Dot, I can tell you that there's been, an outreach process has taken place. Lonnie would definitely have a lot more information. I'm sure she'd be really happy to talk with you about it, if you'd like me to have her call you.
No, I just wondered if in the process of discussing this as a routine matter, there was any outreach to parties, including the town, that might be impacted by these maps, the change in these maps.
Yes.
So the broader question you're asking about town meeting, and the reason that it was pulled from our discussion tonight is that we will have a discussion tomorrow with the town clerk and the town moderator to think through what processes we would need to put in place as a municipality to create an environment where people feel safe attending town meeting. And you're right, we were waiting to hear what the governor had to say with respect to those particular gatherings. I wonder in some way whether, I know the governor, the governor doesn't have any authority to regulate other legislative bodies. And so I'm sort of wondering whether that's why, as a sort of legal matter, he's stayed away from, you know, offering executive advice with respect to the operation of another legislature, which is what our town meeting is. So, but notwithstanding that, I think we wanted to hear what he had to say on Monday and what his team had to say on Monday with respect to, you know, the reopening of certain aspects of our state economy and our ability to, you know, gather together to go to church or synagogue. So I think that we will take, you know, some analogous steps to that outlined in the House of Worship protocols. I think that's informative. But to your point, the town really needs to come up with a plan, again, to be sure that folks feel like they can attend our town meeting. So we are, we will, you know, have that meeting tomorrow. And our hope is that by the end of the week, we have the analysis in place that we, you know, will issue the warrant and move forward with our town meeting planning. So, you know, I, look, I take it very, very seriously. The credibility, offering a credible opportunity for people to vote on these, the things that are important to the town, I think is a significant responsibility that the Board of Selectmen holds. And, you know, I think the point you raised too is that there are, there are big issues that we take up, right? That everybody focuses on. But the town really can't function in some of the more mundane sort of day-to-day things, like accepting easements and, you know, the FEMA map and DCR liability. There are things that because of our structure, only town meeting can do. And so our job at this juncture is to put forward a process that, again, the townspeople will feel, will feel safe in making a determination that they can attend.
And I do understand that the part that concerns me is about the number. The number of people who can gather. Because even though he did speak to the religious issue, there still was restriction on the number of people.
Well, and we would intend to follow that, Dr. Gallo, in terms of making more venues available so that we can reduce the capacity in any one room. So I think, for instance, houses of worship are limited to 40% of their congregation or what their congregation can seat. You know, we might, we might actually decide that we would create lesser density in the gymnasium, the auditorium, and the cafeteria and open all three of those locations when, in fact, we might have a town meeting that would fit, you know, entirely in the gymnasium. So I think that we are mindful of trying to create socially-distanced spacing in venues where we can conduct this business.
Thank you.
No, thank you for the question. It was a great, great question. And obviously more to come on that. Further comments or questions from the public for items not on the agenda this evening? Okay, now I will go back to what was item number three, the COVID update. So Tom and Michelle, sorry about that.
No problem. I mean, we cover a little bit of that in here, so hopefully this will help as well. So the reopening plan, yesterday, the Baker-Polito administration published the Reopening Massachusetts Plan, developed by the Reopening Advisory Board. The goal of the four-phase reopening plan is to methodically allow businesses, services, and activities to resume while avoiding a resurgence of COVID-19 in the state. I would encourage everyone to read the 29-page report if they haven't already. It's available on the state's website, mass.gov. And we also have it posted to a link on the town's COVID-19 Update Center on our own website. The reopening plan is driven by public health data, which means that key public health metrics will determine if and when the state decides to proceed through the reopening phases. The state is tracing these six public health indicators. COVID-19 positive test rate, number of individuals who have died from COVID-19, number of patients with COVID-19 in hospitals, healthcare system readiness, testing capacity, and contact tracing capabilities. As of yesterday, Massachusetts is in Phase One. The state is allowing organizations in the following sectors to reopen this week or next under new guidelines: construction, manufacturing, places of worship, car washes, hair salons, barber shops, laboratories, office spaces, pet grooming, and retail, remote fulfillment and curbside pickup. There is also guidance on some outdoor recreation activities and resumption of health and human services. Detailed sector-specific guidance is available, again, on the state's website. In addition to implementing a sector-specific protocols, all businesses must comply with the state's mandatory workplace safety standards before reopening in the appropriate phase of the plan. The mandatory workplace safety standards are designed to reduce the risk of COVID-19 transmission to employees and customers and are applicable to all sectors and industries. They cover social distancing, hygiene protocols, staffing and operations, and cleaning and disinfecting. Businesses and organizations must self-certify that they have met the mandatory workplace safety standards, develop the COVID-19 control plan, and comply with applicable sector-specific protocols before they can reopen. Businesses currently providing essential services and businesses eligible to reopen in Phase One have until May 25, 2020, to comply with these new requirements. We have included an online COVID-19 complaint form on our COVID-19 Update Center website where members of the public can report non-compliance issues observed at Hingham businesses and organizations with respect to the state's new Phase One requirements. We know this is a lot to digest. Our local reopening team is reviewing the state's guidance and reaching out to different sectors of Hingham's economy to educate organizations about the new requirements and advise on compliance. We are meeting with representatives of Hingham's Houses of Worship tomorrow afternoon to talk through their specific concerns and procedures. We also continue to work on our own plans to reopen towns' facilities safely. During a call with municipal leaders this afternoon, Lieutenant Governor Polito noted that her team is working on guidance for how the state will manage its buildings, workforce, and public-facing services like the RMV and that cities and towns may find this guidance useful in developing our own plans and procedures. Our local reopening team is working on consolidating all state guidance as well as our internal procedures for town facilities and organizing that information into one Hingham-specific reopening plan that our residents, businesses, and employees can reference. We will have more details to report on that next week. Sorry, I'm scrolling. We also continue to plan for town meeting. As of now, we are still planning for town meeting on June 22 at 7:00 PM. That plan is being evaluated against this new guidance from the state, plans in other communities, new and proposed state legislation, and other considerations. We have a meeting planned for tomorrow with Selectman Johnson, Town Moderator Michael Puzo, Town Clerk Eileen McCracken, and Town Council John Cofflin. We'll report out on town meeting, more formally, town meeting plans next Tuesday. Governor Baker has indicated that each of the four phases of the reopening plan will last a minimum of three weeks. If the data indicates significant increases in COVID-19 transmission, we may have to return to a prior phase or close sectors of the economy. With restrictions and capacity limitations, the state expects the following. Phase Two will include retail, restaurants, lodging, additional personal care services such as nail salons and day spas, campgrounds, playgrounds, and spray decks, public and community pools, all athletic fields and courts, and limited youth sports. Phase Three will include bars, arts and entertainment, casinos, gyms, and museums, all other businesses except for nightclubs and lodge venues, additional recreation and outdoor activities, and youth sports with games and tournaments with limited crowd sizes. And then Phase Four will include a full resumption of activity in a "new normal." The state plans to publish guidance for sectors opening in later phases on its website in advance of those phases. Lieutenant Governor Polito mentioned today that she expects a guidance on summer camps will be posted next week, which will help our Recreation Department plan its programs and work with the parents in town. Safer-at-home advisory. As for residents, we are currently operating under a safer-at-home advisory, which means that everyone should leave home only for healthcare, permitted work, shopping, and outdoor activities. People over age 65 and people who have underlying health conditions who are at high risk for COVID-19 should continue to stay home except for essential errands. Frequent hand washing and social distancing remain critical, and face coverings are still required when a social distance of six feet cannot be maintained. Lieutenant Governor Polito stressed the idea of personal responsibility and asked everyone to do their part to make the reopening process successful. Regarding COVID-19 cases, in terms of the latest data as of last Wednesday, the Department of Public Health was reporting deep, the Department of Public Health was reporting 223 laboratory confirmed cases in Hingham. As of today, DPH is reporting 87,925 cases in Massachusetts, of which 7,198 are in Plymouth County. Please keep in mind that the numbers reported by the state are lower than the actual numbers of cases because they only include those who have tested positive. A total of 476,940 people in Massachusetts have been tested to date. About 2.8% of reported Massachusetts cases are currently hospitalized. The number of hospitalized COVID-19 patients has been slowly decreasing since April 21st, according to DPH data. Lieutenant Governor Polito's team reported today that Massachusetts has been the third hardest-hit state in the country in terms of COVID-19. We continue to stress the importance of taking precautions to prevent the spread of COVID-19 so we don't erase the progress we've made thus far. As the number of new cases reported each day slows and our health department receives assistance from the state's community tracing collaborative, our local COVID-19 response is shifting from contact tracing to focus more on working with businesses, employees and members of the public to implement the state's new reopening procedures. Michelle can maybe do a town services update now?
Michelle? Next turn.
You're welcome.
I have updates from three departments tonight. So the first is Veteran Services. Last Friday morning, our Veteran Services Officer Keith German presented Police Chief Glenn Olson with a memorial wreath in front of Town Hall in honor of Peace Officers Memorial Day to show our continued support for our officers and to honor those who lost their lives or were injured in the line of duty. This year's ceremony had to be small due to the COVID-19 crisis, but our Veteran Services Department continues to find creative ways to mark these important occasions despite the circumstances. Tom and I both attended that and it was very nice. As always, we always appreciate everything that Keith is able to organize. Another example of that resourcefulness and spirit is the virtual Memorial Day celebration VSO German and Lisa Potts have organized in collaboration with Harbor Media this year. Residents can tune into channels nine, 22 and 97 with Comcast or channels 2930 or 2131 with Verizon to watch the ceremony on TV on Monday at 11:00 AM. It will also be posted to Harbor Media's YouTube page. This year's ceremony will feature remarks from local resident Jack Chapin, who graduated from Hingham High, served for over 30 years in the US Navy on both active duty and in the reserves and now works for the Massachusetts Environmental Police. This Sunday evening, the night before Memorial Day, you may notice that GAR Hall and the Veterans Memorial Town Hall will be lit in gold light. Thanks to VSO German, HMLP's Paul Henyou and the Town Hall Team led by Jeff Peasy, Hingham will participate in a statewide initiative to light up buildings and other structures in gold in recognition of Memorial Day and the Gold Star families in our community. In our Elder Services Department, staff continue to, to conduct outreach calls to seniors in Hingham and make referrals for services. Staff there are reporting an increase in medical transportation requests as medical appointments rescheduled from March are coming up now. They are transporting seniors to critical appointments only at this time and are cleaning and disinfecting the vehicle between each trip. Elder Services staff are also auditing existing Zoom classes and assisting in the development of new ones. They expect to have a ladies' coffee meeting starting next Friday. There has been an increase in requests for social opportunities from seniors feeling the longer-term effects of isolation during this time. And finally, the Hingham Public Library continues to offer online and remote services and resources. Staff can help you get a library card, find and access digital resources such as eBooks, audiobooks, music and movies. Learn how to use online programs like Zoom or troubleshoot technology issues. The library is also offering online storytimes, coffee breaks to connect and chat with others, yoga, craft programs, technology classes and more. Sign up for virtual classes, request an appointment for one-on-one help, get a library e-card and learn about upcoming programs and digital resources at hingamlibrary.org/online or by leaving a message at 781-741-1405. Thank you.
Great. Thanks for those great reports. Questions or comments from my colleagues with respect to the COVID-19 or Town Services update? Joe?
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Michelle, for those reports. It's becoming a habit that you really are providing such excellent reports in these circumstances. So it's, it's really a testament to your, to your diligence. Thank you. And Tom, I'd like to assure you that I did not plant a question with Dr. Gallo. Question concerning town meetings is one that I have had on a consistent basis with the town administrator. So I appreciate Dr. Gallo's question and we will be moving forward with hopefully some good responses there. I note, I note that there are some communities that have actually planned to have their town meetings outside. And I know that various options are being looked at. So I know we'll be getting to that. Tom, I did have a specific question about the governor's guidance and Hingham. Am I correct that the governor's guidance or the state regulations here are minimum standards? Such, such that either the town or private organizations need to adhere to those standards, but they can actually have additional standards above those?
Absolutely. And in some places, I will be recommending that through different portions of our, our organization as we discuss, as we talk to sectors of the community.
Yes. I mean, I've heard from leaders of Houses of Worship that in fact, despite certain guidance issued by the state, they may be taking a more stringent approach to safeguard those who want to attend services.
Especially seniors and those with underlying medical conditions. Yes.
Yes. But I don't have any other questions. So thank you. Thank you both very much.
Thanks, Joe. Mary?
I don't have any questions about the update. I appreciate the information.
Great. So Tom and Michelle, anything further to report this evening?
I'm good. Thank you, Karen.
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Okay. Joe, Selectman report?
Nothing for me this evening.
Mary?
Just a couple of things. First of all, there was an article in the Boston Globe this morning, but people may have seen that the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation has, last week, they actually updated their revenue projections for the state. They had issued some, some guidance in the middle of April and a couple of weeks later said that they were going to be making an update because they thought the economic impact of COVID was going to be more significant. Their report was actually issued yesterday and I, I just wanted to make known to people who have been following this issue that the town forecast and the financial plan that the Board of Selectmen, the school committee and the advisory committee all supported last week actually reflects that guidance. So the information that came out from Mass Taxpayers Foundation had already been reflected in our numbers. So our, our sort of forecast right now is, is unchanged. Secondly, I just wanted to mention, and Karen and Joe, you're probably getting a lot of the same emails I'm getting about different organizations having Zoom meetings and conferences to help municipalities as we, as, as we all lead during this very unusual time. Today I participated in a Strong Towns event called the Local Leaders Toolkit: A Response to the Pandemic. Tomorrow, I'm going to be participating in a Massachusetts Selectment Association Leadership Conference. And also Fitch, which is one of the rating services, is having a conference on the coronavirus impact on state and local governments. So all of this information, I think, will help inform all of us as we move forward. It's been my experience that a lot of these conferences send a copy of the presentation when it's done. So I will forward that to Tom and Michelle so that, so that all of us get the benefit of seeing that great information. I thought the, the Strong Towns today in particular, it was a, a lot of very good things to think about.
Great. Thanks for having me. Thank you. I have a couple of quick, quick things. This is National EMS Week and I just want to give a shout out to Chief Murphy and his paramedic team. You know, the, the advanced life-saving ambulance service that's run by our fire department provides incredible service to the town and also, as you know, we've discussed, is a revenue source for the town too. So I think it's, you know, it's, it's providing, again, just an essential service. And I, I think that, you know, particularly in this environment, you know, those folks like our public safety personnel in general are coming to work every day not knowing what they're going to be presented with. So I think it's particularly poignant this year to recognize their service to the town. Again, particularly during this challenging time. I also want to highlight the Memorial Day ceremony. You know, these are the times, like, you know, we talked about town meeting earlier, Memorial Day, the Peace Officers Memorial. You know, these are times when we come together and express our values as a community. Memorial Day is always a wonderful reflection, I, I think, for the town. And VSO German does a great job in planning and executing that program. And, you know, not to be deterred, he and Lisa Potts, I think, have put together a tremendous tribute virtually. And I, I for one can't wait to hear Jack Chapin's speech on Monday. So, so do tune in if you have that, that opportunity. And, you know, last but not least, I just want to, I just want to echo, you know, Mary's comments with respect to the forecast and our kind of careful assessment of where our revenue streams were likely to be, at least as far as we know right now and in terms of our budget planning. You know, I said it last week, I'll say it again this week. I'm just incredibly proud of the effort that we undertook to produce a plan that I think is responsible and effective and allows us the, the, the tools that we need to manage our budget effectively during FY21. We couldn't have done it without the, the work of our staff, the work of this Board of Selectmen, the work of the advisory committee and the work of the school committee and the, and the school department staff. And it really is that level of collegiality and cooperation that I think we expect from our government, but we don't always get. You know, beyond the boundaries of town, you know, I think in Hingham, we have that expectation for ourselves and I think we delivered on that. So, you know, I think that the, the level of detailed analysis that went into producing, you know, the overarching policy document, I, I think cannot be understated. And, you know, I think Mary today, reporting on the Mass Taxpayers Foundation numbers, which are reflected in our numbers, is, is, you know, one tidbit that we, I think we have our eye on the ball. So with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All is in favor. Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.